Hey, we're live with Town of Western Civic Affairs for a zoning board meeting in the town of Western. That zoning board meeting today is going to be... I'm gonna pack it up for you at night, please. That zoning board meeting today, we don't have any idea, of course, what that zoning board meeting is about, because in the town of Western, the last thing any member of any board here in the town of Western wants to provide to the people is clarity and clearness on not only what they have done via FOIL and their failure to answer FOIL, but what they're going to be doing, whether that's in five minutes, five days, or five years, because in Western, the people just don't matter. So what we're doing here today is apparently we're going to sit as if we were in a rodeo in the stadium, watching the performance of many folks on the boards here, yes-men in Western, simply go along with the status quo, whatever the boss says goes. That's what happens in the town of Western at these board meetings. In fact, over the last three years, almost three years, that we've been recording town board meetings in the town of Western and in other towns, what we have seen in Western is all aye, all quiet on the Western front. That is, all ayes and no nays in any voting. If there is ever any discrepancy, there would be someone that would just bow out and not vote, abstain, as it were, from voting for any given action in the town of Western. But for someone to actually not agree with the board on any given decision is a no-no in the town of Western. You will be slapped on the hand, the wrist, as it were, if you ever did that in public for the public to see. So we're gonna get started here pretty quick. Carl DeFranco, the screaming man, is here tonight, so we don't want to get in his path. But we will, just let you know that we were on Sly Hill today when they brought in their 18-ton truck on a six-ton road to drop off some equipment. Now, let's get this perfectly clear. Unlike some other folks in the state of New York, who are totally against these solar companies for what they're doing, literally, they're just the animal they are, and they can only get as far as what a town board will allow them to do. Hi, Carl. Such as the town of Western. If the town of Western truly did not want to implement solar in their town, it would be an easy enough thing to simply not admit solar in their town. Now, could there be some pushback from members of the community that have land that might want to use it for that? Well, yes, there could be some pushback. However, if you look at the comprehensive plan, that comprehensive plan states specifically that there are priorities in that comprehensive plan, one of those being agriculture, the next being residential. So, and as well, there are some other concerns out there, such as business, home business, things like that, that need to front any activity with respect to major commercial development in an industrial format like solar. So the town is in a bit of a pickle now, because they've approved one solar and are on the verge of approving a second solar. And of course, as you know, and we've opined many times here in the last almost six months, there was a solar moratorium, which the public fronted and petitioned and gave to the town in April this year before any solar was approved, so that we could make sure that the people were represented properly in the town of Western with respect to solar. And the town told us to shove that and basically threw it in the trash. So six months later, of course, now when they have this issue and things aren't looking right, and the farmers are getting a little angry, saying, "What do you mean? They're taking our land so that we can't farm it because we can't afford to pay the outrageous sums..." Good evening. "We can't afford to pay the outrageous sums that solar is paying for that same land." So what are we supposed to do now? When in Western, agriculture is our lives here, and it truly is. So we're gonna get in there, and we're gonna go ahead and get started on this meeting. Good to have you with us, Town of Western Civic Affairs. I'm Don, this is Carol. We're going in. Yeah, there's a square box in there. If I didn't bring it, I'll have to go home and get it. There's a square box in there. Can you bring it out, please? The laptop whiz kit is added again. Mr. Swiss. How you making out? Is it turning out good for you? Or so-so?
So-so.
Yeah, always something, right?
I'm relying on the Zoom AI to do all the closed captions.
I don't think the state is gonna hold you accountable for having 100%, when that's not what technology...
The first few were real bad.
Like gibberish or Russian?
A little Chinese.
Sure. If you've got this little thing, I'm gonna try this tonight. If you've got the mics up there, just to see if it kinda... There's that drone.
Hey, Carl. Hello, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
I'm still alive, still upright, as best I can tell.
That's important.
The original applications. And then here's five smaller steps that are manageable. There's more information here. The application to the zoning.
Thank you so much for saying that.
There it comes.
There you are. The owners of the Adamses here, we can start.
Stuttering every sentence tonight. I'm stuttering every sentence tonight.
Can I make you ask who you are?
Why? We talked about this on Thursday, and you said, "I got more than I know what to do with." Jalapenos? Yeah, I've got some of them. You like them? Yeah, I'm sorry. I got a big bag of them here. Before we leave, Brad, have you... Jalapenos.
It's a devil, devil out loud, it's gonna change.
Make sure the mics are kicked on. Go. All right, it's one after seven. I'm not sure if our other two members are gonna be here. One specific, but the other one I haven't heard from. We'll go ahead and start the meeting.
Our flag is religious to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We do have a quorum present tonight, so we can go ahead and conduct business for tonight. First item, we have a copy of the minutes from the last meeting. Let me had a chance to look through it, see if they have any changes or corrections. Do I have a second to accept the minutes? All in favor? Okay, you had a drink, sir. Okay. Under old business, we had a motion to table the application for a short-term rental for the Egan's on Town Line Road until the County 239-M was completed. That has been completed, I did receive a response, there was no comment. I think, can't guarantee it, I think I posted a comment, a copy of their return in addition to the original submission on the website. If not, it'll be up there tomorrow morning. Also, in any rate, what you have on the table here is typical, a resolution that we would pass that would approve it. However, at this time, I'm going to open a public hearing, so if anyone in the room has any comments they want to offer or questions they want to offer specifically on the application for the short-term rental special use permit, please identify yourself, and we'll allow you to speak. Okay, if there are no comments or questions from the public, we'll close the public hearing. So we now have a resolution for a special use permit. I'll go ahead and read it. The Egan's requested a special use permit to convert a residence into a short-term rental. Property is located 7449 Town Line Road in the town of Western. The property is currently on occasional use listed in the RRA Zone, Residential Rural Agricultural, which allows short-term rentals with a special permit use. There are no changes being made to the property other than intended use. This use is classified as type 2 under the New York Environmental Quality Review Act, and therefore does not require a review. General Municipal Law 239-M review request was submitted to the United County Planning Department. The county has returned a no-comment response. So as a conclusion, the zoning board of appeals has considered the information provided, the 239-M review. We've now conducted a public hearing to allow comment from the general public. Does any member of the board have any additional comments or questions they want to add at this time? Okay, I will call for a roll call vote. I'm gonna, I'll give this to you, and we'll mark out if somebody is actually not here. Okay, Carl DeFranco, I vote aye. Mr. Wilbert?
Aye.
Tyler Swiss?
Aye.
Bill Gamilow?
No.
Vern Berry?
Aye.
And Ryan Tebow and Dialogues are not present. We have four ayes and one no, the resolution is carried. So the special permit use is approved. I'm gonna give this to the secretary, make sure that the town clerk and the clothes officer both get a copy of that. Okay, we have a second item of business tonight. At long last, we have submission of a package for the Ferney property on Stokes Westernville Road, which is to operate a, I guess the best way to describe it would be a party facility or a catering facility. Bankroll facility, okay. That is, under the current ordinance, a commercial use which is permitted in the RRA district. There are two things that are gonna have to happen now that we actually have the application. Under the zoning ordinance, but in fact, under the secret law, this would be, I think we determined last time, that this is going to be a tight, this will be an unlisted type under secret. That does require an environmental quality review. That review will be conducted by the town planning board. Okay, so I will forward this information to the chair of the planning board. They will probably begin next month to take it up. We will look at your EAF Form 1, which should be the long form. We will conduct a review of that. We will send out copies of all of the information to any of the agencies that we deemed involved. So at a minimum, that's probably gonna be DEC, the Canal Corporation, United County Highway Department, probably the Corps of Engineers, although they never come back and say much of anything anyway. So we will send that out. They have basically 30 days to respond to that request. When it comes back, the planning board will then make a determination as to whether there's an impact or not. Once they complete that, it will come back to us as the zoning board. We will, at the same time, will submit a 239-M to the county planning department, because they have to go through that whole review. They may come back with comments, they may not. If they do, we'll let you know if there's any comments or suggestion changes that they have in mind for it, so you can take an act on that. Once we do that, we will have a public hearing, so we can get a public input on any potential impacts that the public sees or any questions that they have. And then, at that time, once the public hearing is completed, normally for something, if there's a lot of public interest on it, we will delay a month to give ourselves a chance to digest any comments or questions that have come up, and then we will take a vote as to whether or not to approve the permit. So as of now, we will acknowledge receipt of your application. I will entertain a motion from a member of the board to transmit the application to the planning board for their review. Okay, Bill made the motion, do I have a second? All in favor? Okay, you're underway. Okay, so the planning board will be meeting on December 15th. So you can, you can come, or you can actually, if you want to give Pete Donahue a call, make sure he's got the stuff and that he's ready to actually start with that. And that will begin your process.
Do we need digital copies of that?
He's already sent me a digital copy, so as soon as I get a chance to go through that, I will either put the information directly on the website, or I will provide a link to a Dropbox location where anybody who wants to download it can get it. If it gets too big, the website just won't take it.
These files that I sent are reasonable?
Yeah, usually if they're no more than about five or six meg, they'll be fine. And I'll put them all up there, so they'll be ready, and the public can look at it, and that'll give them a chance to go through it. The other item that the planning board will take up at the same time, because you're located on the lakeside of Stokes Westernville Road, you're in a land conservation district, so they will take up a separate consideration as to whether or not there are implications from the land conservation district that have to be taken into account. When they complete theirs, they will forward back to us any considerations that they want the ZPA to put into the special use permit, whatever conditions are put on it. So just understand that that could happen as well. So that's where that stands at the moment. If you want to give a presentation to the board as to what we're looking at here, we could pass these out, people get a chance to take a look at what's there.
Now, is this already being booked? I saw stuff online for bookings.
There's been some interest, that we do have some people that have reserved dates once this hopefully goes through.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, well, I mean, assuming everything goes correctly, planning board will take it up next month, so it'll be January before their review is finished. If then, it will come back to us the following week, but normally we don't get time to actually conduct a public hearing, so the public hearing will probably be in February, so the latest you'd see a vote would be March. Okay, once that's granted, the informed codes officer will go through the mechanics of actually granting you your building permit and your certificate of occupancy. And that's between you guys and him as far as code enforcement. The only thing the ZPA is concerned with is whether or not you comply with the zoning ordinance. So that's where that stands now. If you want to just give us a quick presentation of whatever's here, that would be great.
So this is, my name is Tim Hogan, I'm the engineer for the project. Jim Furner is the property owner and the applicant. This was the workup plan. Basically, Jim had purchased it, and then he says, "Now what am I gonna do with this empty dairy barn?" And the first thing he did is clean it out. And then from there, he decided to make it a banquet facility, whether it's for weddings, reunions, anything that would get a group of people involved, that they could go to this dairy barn. It's not heated, it has been lit up, and it's been, there's some new finishes on the interior. Jim's done a little bit of work on the exterior. We anticipate around 150 to 200 people. In all the documents, I reflect 150, because I had to pick a number to design a water system, which will be developed from a new well that's been drilled, and then also a wastewater treatment system that will be... We've been discussing this with the health department with regard to the water. We've established, now we've established more with the planning department, that this is a, they consider it a non-communal transient location, which means just visitors, but they don't spend the night. So, and that's a description you may hear back from the planning board with regard to the Department of Health. With regard to the DEC, we've submitted documentation for them for the approval of a wastewater treatment system. We have been dealing with them since June, and we still are waiting back for responses, and that includes a lot of letters. I have, makes on my professional experiences, there's something going on in Albany that, for some reason, it's been okay at the local level. It's just there's a lot of activities in Albany, so it's just the next one that's coming through the gate. The parking would be basically to the left of the barn, as you see it. The traffic that's generated is typically, I utilized the square footage of the building, and then went to the zoning. It came up with about 33 spaces, but I have laid out 96 spaces. Based on the main floor, which would be the upper level, would be utilized by all attendees. The lower level is primarily only 50% would be used by an attendee. Be the bathrooms, some changing areas if there happens to be a wedding venue there. The other half is for food prep and/or storage. Food will be brought to the site, it won't be made on the site, be catered. So that's one of the reasons that my discussions with the health department were, they were in favor of that. There eventually be some landscaping, it will be on the road frontage towards the left, but basically, if you drive by, it will look very familiar to what it is today. A field to the left, the barn, and in the back is the trees. With regard to the land conservation, I have not looked at, is there any zoning regulations on that?
It's considered an overlay, so it's still an RRA district, but there are considerations. The planning board will look at it to make sure there's no significant impact, and probably the secret will cover that as well.
Also, on the lakeside, which would be the back of the barn, there's no changes. There were some silos that have either been repaired or have been modified to like the presence of an open deck. But again, that's just, it has nothing to do with the site. It's just the, and we'll go with that with Scott, during the building permit and certificate of occupancy sector of this process. Any vending, any vendors and caterers, they would not park in that parking lot to the left of the building. There's buildings behind the existing home, and a couple of storage buildings, they'll park back in that area off to the right.
Are those buildings, I was under the impression those are beds and breakfasts?
No.
Which building? We have the house.
The old farmhouse, yeah.
Yeah, the old farmhouse.
The two buildings behind were...
One is a garage, storage, actually both of them are. And then there's what we refer to as the middle barn, and what we've been using that for what we did for our daughter's party, was we just had our little cocktail hour there. So it's just a...
So there's no bed and breakfasts?
No, no, no. No. Now, are you going in the house? Well, the house part will probably offer as a get-ready for the, say, the wedding, for the wedding party, and if they choose to rent the house to spend the night, that'll probably be available too.
So you are potentially offering it for short-term rental.
So we want to add that for our application?
Yeah, you probably should, if the house, if you intend the house to be available for rental, you should include that as well.
Okay, so, I didn't know that.
That you could special use permit?
No, we can cover it all under one.
So the water system, is there two different water systems? One for the barn, and one for the venue outside, and then one for the house? Or are they all one? No, the house is already set, it's the existing system. So what would you have?
Water system.
That's correct.
But I thought you said that the water system was approved because it was non-communal.
Right, it's only separate, but the house has got its own system right today.
I understand, but I thought, I'm taking notes here. I thought you said that no one would be spending the night...
For the new, at the barn?
At the barn.
In the barn?
Right, but if we're adding the, if that water line supports...
It doesn't though.
No, the water system is just for the barn.
The new water system is just for the barn. There's a pre-existing well for the house use today. There's two wells on the site.
So, the house, and then I'm talking about the bed and breakfast house, that's on the same line as the house?
No.
Or it's on the line as the barn? Or there's no water?
The house has its own water supply.
Right.
But there's two houses?
One house.
Just one house.
One house.
There are no other houses there.
Well, but the bed and breakfast?
No, the bed and breakfast is the house.
Is the house.
So, you got the old farmhouse, the old farmhouse, and then refurbished and set up as a bed and breakfast.
Somebody was living there.
In the house?
Yeah.
If you live in the house.
I've been staying there, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you're living here, you can operate as a bed and breakfast, that's fine. In fact, bed and breakfast is defined as an owner-occupied house. If you didn't occupy it, it would be a short-term rental.
So, given that, wouldn't it be two different applications?
We can consider the entire thing as, what did you call, what was your official...
But one is a banquet.
As a banquet facility?
Yes.
Then you've got a potential rental.
But what I would do is put the application in as a banquet facility and include the house as a bed and breakfast. Or, I mean, we can make it a separate one. That's actually easier to do.
Okay.
If you want to apply separately for just for bed and breakfast.
I'll send you a new application for the bed and breakfast.
Send it to a separate one for the bed and breakfast.
Okay.
Because that would separate it, because that'll be a type 2 since the house is already there and we're not making any changes to that.
So, as I said, the backside of the barn which faces the lake, everything is inside the blue line, inside, or inside, outside the blue line, and there's no changes to the right side of the parcel at all. The only change is really just updating on cosmetics on the barn and the parking area is basically going to be the existing gravel stone right now, so...
Okay, now, if I'm looking at it from Stokes Westernville Road, where's the parking area? To the left or to the right?
To the left.
Over to the left, the open area on the far side of the barn.
Correct.
Okay, where is the septic system?
It's also well over to the left.
Okay, so it's not going to be underneath the parking area?
Correct.
Okay, I think you know better, but...
Yeah.
So, there's 93 parking spaces, you said?
I've laid out 96 of them.
96.
There's more than enough parking available?
I don't have it in front of me, but I think the parking thing in the ordinance requires one spot for every two.
It was 250 square foot per, and I used a commercial or retail layout.
Okay, so how far, on the far left, there's a little stream that goes down through there.
Correct.
So, how close is that septic?
This...
I assume you've got to run that through DC and...
Yep.
And those 10 other...
The stream has been enclosed.
Is that in a pipe?
Correct.
It's in a pipe?
Correct. And bear with me here, I've got that on...
There's that culvert underneath there that the county used to go through.
The county's got a culvert underneath the road, and then there's an open area, and then from there, it's piped all the way to this Zaccala property. So, the barn would be right here on Stokes Westernville Road. There's the opening where the culvert comes across, and then it's piped all the way to the parking lot.
The septic is piped?
No, 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 no. This is a drainage pipe. A drainage pipe.
Stormwater.
Yes. The septic system is on the back. It's 10 feet off the parking lot, and we're more than 25 feet, it's probably, that's probably about 65 feet to where the ditch used to be.
Well, I mean, as far as the sanitary system, that's...
A DEC.
That's the DEC. Determination is the level that meets the requirement.
Right.
And Scott will be in on that too, so... The only thing we'll tell you is you're going to have to comply with whatever requirements are there. Okay, so you're going to submit a separate application to use the house as a bed and breakfast?
Correct.
Okay, so that'll keep that separate from this, that's actually cleaner.
Yeah, and I'll send that to you in the morning. I'll copy that, email it to you.
Now, coming off, just for my opening, coming off the back, that's a long rock to the lake.
Yes, it is.
So, you have a bunch of stairs there.
No stairs to the lake.
No access to the lake? Am I correct, there's no access?
Yeah, there's access, but different pathways.
I guess what I'm going after is if there's people at the wedding, of course, you have some drinks and, oh, the stairway's right down to the lake. I'm thinking for your own insurance. So, that's completely...
Yeah, it's not a, is that cliff trying to say it does go down?
That's pretty good slope down there.
Yeah, it's pretty slow.
Right, no, nothing there but mud anyway, so...
Which you want to make sure that you're separated or a fence or something to keep people from wandering over.
I'm sure the state code has something regarding that anyway as far as access to the lake, protecting it. And your insurance company would definitely have something to say about it.
Yes, sure.
Anybody else have any other questions or observations or anything? Okay, so at present, we've already made a motion. This will go to the planning board, so they can start the secret process, and they'll also consider the land conservation. You're going to send me a, you'll send a separate application for converting to bed and breakfast. Please let Scott know that you're doing it. You can submit it directly to the board, but please let Scott know that you're going to show that to him. They're going to keep it separate.
Okay.
So, he knows that.
All right.
Is there a link to the bed and breakfast site that you can supply this to?
Pardon me?
A link to where people are making reservations on...
We don't have one yet. As far as the house goes, we haven't offered any part of it. We've been living there. But it's something that we're going to do in the future.
Maybe in the future.
Yeah, so it probably would be best that you go ahead and apply for the permit to do that too. Any other questions? Okay, so this is underway. At some point in time, you owe us 25 bucks for the application, but that can be between now and the time they build on the permit, so...
There you go.
How long has this been in the works?
Town western.
Seems like five years at least.
At least.
Okay, any other new business for the board?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Tim. If there's no other new business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for being here. Our next meeting will be, it would be 22nd of December. Is that compatible with everybody?
Do we have anything on the agenda?
I don't know. If we don't, I'll just, we'll send out a cancellation notice so there's nothing coming up. Could you get that to us, you know?
I'll decide, I'll decide when we can have it, if nobody's got anything on it.
Okay, great, thank you, Carl.
Just to let you know for sure.
Do you have a license?
What?
You can have a license?
He told you you could have a license.
Yeah.
Yes, who am I having? Thanks for reminding me who I am.
Yeah, I have some peppers.
Oh, look at that, my goodness. I'll just take two. Take two, there's more. Thank you, Carl. Thank you, Mickey. Reading my Chipotle's now. We can renew my Chipotle's now. Good for your heart, so they say. It's not a killer cure, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a little spicy, but you just hope for the best.
Yep. I like tapas, freezer, or freezing them, and then if I'm making chili, just grab a handful. Make a place with that.
I like to slice my ham dry and put it on my smoker.
Three hours.
Chipotle's are smoked. See you, Vern.
I didn't talk to your buddy at all.
Take it easy, Vern.
My fishing buddy.
Paul?
He didn't set up for next year. He wants to do the same thing.
Yes.
Carol.
Mr. Gamela?
Yes, sir.
I have to have a couple words with you.
No, thank you.
No?
No, I'm not interested.
It's good, it's good stuff. Mr. Gamela wouldn't speak with us tonight. We wanted to chat with him about his wife who is on the real estate board, who was very passionate about her position on the planning board with respect to solar and how it's impacting the value of properties in the town of Western. Of course, Mr. Carl DeFranco here opining in the last meeting that it, according to his research, that there was no loss in property value due to solar implementations in any town in a commercial way. And of course, Ms. Gamela coming up with information that basically said that she's lost clients in the town of Western already because of this, and that's in a five to eight-mile radius around the town. So, that was pretty interesting. We just wanted to basically let him know that we recognized that that's not the kind of follow-the-leader process that's typically followed in the town of Western. We appreciate the fact that there are folks out there that can think for themselves, and Rita Gamela clearly is in the lead on that in the town of Western with respect to voting with how her, she feels, what she feels in her heart about what this is doing to her business and the community that she lives in as well. Of course, Mr. Gamela not wanting to comment at all on that tonight, which he is allowed, he's just, as he said, not interested. So, that's it for the meeting tonight. Not a lot out there. I'm kind of surprised. It looks like a couple of members, the secretary was badgering this person here who was looking at installing this center on Stokes Westernville Road, looking for ways to possibly make it more difficult. Do you have a website access, you know? What about your sanitary and the water for the two buildings? I don't know. To me, that was badgering. I mean, of course, he's got all that in place. He's working with the right folks to get that done, but in any case, we're going to take off at very good meeting, very quick, very clean, took care of business, and we're going to move on. So, thanks for joining us here tonight, Town of Western Civic Affairs. I'm Dawn, this is Carol. We try to bring you this every single time. There's a town board meeting for anything in the town of Western. We're here for you. Community matters, information matters, data matters, and the people matter, even though this town feels differently. Thanks so much for joining us tonight, Town of Western Civic Affairs, your community, your future.